Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Everybody, my name is Art Whitman. I'd like to bring this meeting of the Shastberry Select Board to order on January 16th, 2023, at 6:31. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything shown on the agenda?
No.
Next order of business, we have minutes from January 3rd. Tony was not there.
Right.
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mike. Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Abstain.
Tony abstains, so we have a 4-0-1. Tony, would you sign them, please?
I don't have a copy. Do I have a copy?
It should be maybe under those folders, because those are warrant folders.
Next on the agenda are warrants.
No. No. I have warrant number 23 for $701.99. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Joe. This is Vermont Housing Finance Agency.
I can explain that one.
Sure.
That was the organization that's helping people with their utility bills.
Oh, okay.
For the second time, they paid somebody twice. They're not terribly organized.
Oh, okay.
So that is a refund for one of the two payments that they gave us from the same person.
Good. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? I gotta bring some tape then. I have warrant number 24 for $50,647.11. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Joe.
Second.
Second by Mike. What?
A thousand usually.
We have Appalachian Salt for $8,453. We have Housick, at Housick, for $4,808. We have the Sheriff's Department for $1,846. And Bennington Tire Corporation for $1,752. Must be repaired. I think, oh wait, here we go. Consulting, RCS Consulting for $1,054.95.
That's our IT.
Okay, that's what I thought. And William E. Daley for $1,131.31. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry.
He said aye.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Oh dear.
I hope it makes it.
It doesn't, it's like our lucky charm.
We couldn't break a number, I can't say that out loud.
Case number 11.
I know. I was just using my duct tape too. I have a payroll warrant for payroll, and that is for $30,706.73. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Joe. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Got a little lag there, down in Florida.
Yeah. It's a hard way to shut.
Thank you.
I have another payroll warrant for $31,764.37.
So moved.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Joe. Any questions?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
I have another payroll warrant, 14, for $33,247.98. Any questions?
No.
So moved, I guess. Moved by Mike, seconded by Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I have a check warrant, number 2.
Oh, that's the Beamers retirement warrant. That's paid quarterly, so that's the second for.
Oh, okay, so that's $12,556.73.
So moved.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Joe. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Art, number 5.
Okay. Next on the agenda is announcements. I don't have any, but Martha, I assume you are still looking for people for the two committees?
So, we have several applicants, and we'll be discussing it over the next two weeks and get back to folks. Certainly if anybody does want to join the Economic Development Committee or the Subcommittee of the Coal Hall Committee, to send in a letter of interest and your resume to David Kiernan, our town administrator, and we'll certainly be happy to look at it, but it's getting towards the end of the deadline at this point to turn in your applications.
Any other announcements?
Yep.
Anybody else got any announcements?
I think Tyler.
Yes. You want to come forward, sir? And state your name?
My name is Kit Auschwitz. I live on Holy Smoke Road. I'd like to announce the formation of a group called StopShastberrySolar.org. You can see it online and sign up as you're interested. I'll leave my other remarks.
For the next section.
For the next section.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Art, I don't know if you can see tonight, we have quite a few folks here in the audience, as well as on Zoom tonight, just so you are aware.
If there are no other announcements, then we will go on to public comments. So whoever wants to come forward?
Yep.
Please come up to the.
Ken Harrington.
Yeah, Ken Harrington. I've seen the stories of the solar project proposed on Holy Smoke Road. And I'm off for solar and everything, but you can't destroy everybody's property to do it. My ideal spot for something solar would be like, we're at the bottom of Howard Hill, East Road, Buck Hill. That's out back where you can barely see it from the road, maybe see it from one house, two at the most. You can't, in my estimation, especially on the Holy Smoke Road, which you won't try to own anyway. You could go in there and, I'm not sure how many acres it is or anything, but you're going to go in there with heavy equipment and trucks, and it's going to make a real dangerous situation. You're going to destroy everybody's property value up there, and I'm not sure how much benefits you could get. Here's a story, we were in the bank the other weekend, where the planning commission in Benton has rejected a plan. And also, I think, if it's where I think it is, that's prime agricultural land. And the last I knew, it was against the law in the state of Robott to develop agricultural land. And I don't know what else to say about it, but sign up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Well, that was a good lead in. I guess the last time I was here, which, I don't know, was that two weeks ago?
It was, only two weeks ago.
Seems like a year ago. I was just trying to absorb the magnitude of the project that was proposed for Holy Smoke Road. I've had a chance to review it more carefully now, and I'd just like to share my thoughts on it. It's really a misnomer to call this a solar farm. That makes it sound cute and nice. This is an industrial power plant they're talking about putting up on Holy Smoke Road. It's going to be 85 acres, which is equivalent to 64 football fields, continuous, covering the entire top of that hill. It will be, I'm estimating 50,000 solar panels, requiring at least 200,000 posts that have to be sunk in 10 feet into the ground. It will require one and a half miles of fencing, I'm estimating, and approximately two miles of new roads, and a monster substation, which will be visible, very visible, even though there's some trees up there that they're pretending to hide it behind. These things are big, and they are ugly. So this will be visible for miles around. It's on a hilltop. So this is the behemoth that is slouching toward Shaftberry, as Yates would say. And it's summoned to us by out-of-state commodity brokers. And I regret to say this, because I'm a fairly new resident of Vermont. Vermont, and the town of Shastberry in particular, has left itself vulnerable to this kind of speculation on the part of outside investors. This has nothing to do with solar energy, renewable energy, saving the planet. This has to do with them making money at our expense. So as I said earlier, we have formed a group. Jesse McDougall put up a website. I invite you all to join. And the PUC, who has the final decision in this. It may be true that the town doesn't have an official decision-making authority here, but they need to hear from us. And they want to hear from us. In other words, this has to be input to them. So I'll leave it at that. I invite you all to sign up. We're keeping a schedule of events. We're going to go to the Planning Board next, as far as the official town meetings, but there are other meetings that are taking place, and one tomorrow at my house where there will be cookies and coffee.
Oh, that's good.
Food always brings it up, people out.
This is at 12:30 tomorrow. So, big day. So, in any event, I think as a town, we need to wake up and pay attention to this, because otherwise we're going to find our entire town covered with solar panels. By the way, I am pro-solar. I have solar in my house. This has nothing to do with that. Solar has a definite huge role to play, but it's not on a mountaintop or a hilltop in Vermont. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Any other comments?
Other comments?
I would just like to ask the gentleman, did they reach out to you? They said they were going to.
They did. They didn't respond to any questions, they just said, "We're here to..."
Come closer, so that yes.
The people who showed up last week are, you know, salespeople for VHB. These are underlings who are following the bidding of their master. They have a box to check off. We've talked to the residents. That's not the point here, and now they're inviting us to ask questions. The point is, they've already formed their plan. They're not going to listen to us about, "Oh, why don't you move this solar panel over here a bit?" And I spent, believe me, I spent a lot of time looking at their layout. They have used every square millimeter of usable land up there. The baloney they gave us that there's an extra 100 acres is baloney. It's 100 acres that are on mountain sides that they can't use.
It's unusable land.
It's forested, yeah.
Yes, it's unusable for their purpose. They may be swamped or vernal ponds or something. But they have used every square inch. They're milking this for every penny.
I'm sure.
And these guys are sharks. I mean, commodity brokers, come on, that's all you got to say.
Is the power state in Vermont or going out of state?
We couldn't get an answer from them, but it's clearly going out of state. It's going out of state, there are no jobs. I've been up there watching people come in and out with trucks, no Vermont plates, no Vermont companies, these are all out-of-state, Massachusetts, New York. So all this baloney about jobs, about, you know, in-state power, there's no power coming to Vermont or to Shastberry. They'll throw us a few nickels in the way of taxes, but even there, if you look at the assessments on solar properties, you don't get much.
No.
And so we're going to fight this every step of the way.
What's your website again?
So please, sign up.
The real gut punch is that they're going to dirty somebody's backyard to provide power to another state.
Exactly. And that's already happened, by the way, in Vermont, in Ludlow. That's the other power plant that's of similar magnitude. I invite anybody to go up there and look at it. I'm planning to, I haven't, but you can look at, you know, zone footage. It is a disaster. It's like, and just the size of the substation, it's just frightening, and that's going to be across the street from my house.
The one thing that I had a problem with too is they said, "Oh, there'll be no noise, there'll be no lights." Are you kidding me? They have a security fence going around, but they have to have lighting.
Yes, and they're going to have little carts going around on these roads, you know, checking things out, there's going to be security, I mean, you know, whatever. They're going to try to play this, that, "Oh, it's, we're a quiet neighbor." Forget it. I mean, let's not fall for that. And let's see it as it is.
None of us are against solar, but we want it done right.
Yes.
And this is not the right way to do it.
Yes.
As far as I'm concerned, that's my opinion, but that's...
Yes. So I'd appreciate the support of the board. As I said, I know it all has to go to the PUC. We are, we're going to fight it there, and we're going to fight it everywhere we can. Jesse McDougall, one thing I didn't realize until I walked up there on this property, he runs a business on the other end of Holy Smoke for farm stays. And the main selling point for his business are the views from those houses.
From Tremble.
They're going to be seeing this thing hovering over my house. So he's got a big stake in this too, and we're teaming up to fight this.
Good.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes.
I don't have much to add. Just want to say that the entire neighborhood supports Kit in this.
And what's your name, please?
Lynn Stratten.
Thank you.
On Holy Smoke Road. We're not all here tonight, we couldn't all be here tonight, but we are all in agreement that this can't happen. I just want to express that. We're beside ourselves, we'll do whatever we can to help fight this and prevent it. This is a neighborhood. This is our neighborhood.
Yeah.
And this just, it's sickening. But that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think there's someone on the Zoom. Josh?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Joshua Tob, and I live on...
Oh, did he?
We lost it, Josh.
Uh-oh.
Josh.
Maybe he'll come back on again. Oh, here he is.
Sorry, yes, my name's Joshua Tob, I'm on Myers Road, so not directly affected, but I saw this on, I think it was on the Bennington blotter. I'm just wondering, I'm definitely opposed to it for a whole host of reasons, mostly everything that's already been enumerated. Can you clarify how this sort of happened, and what, where it is right now, and, you know, PUC, who are they? I guess that Shastberry Town doesn't have a role, but may be able to oppose this. I mean, how can I help?
Well, first, sign up.
Will you answer that?
Yes. I'm going to try to answer it for you, because I know the most about it, because as an abutter, I was notified, but only, I was given a 45-day notice. In other words, what, by law, they only notified me because they have to. They didn't notify anybody else, other than the three of us who have residences abutting this property. So they legally had to notify us, otherwise I'm sure they wouldn't have, because they are trying to ram this thing through. And what has, my understanding, and again, please come to my house tomorrow at 10:35 Holy Smoke, at 12:30 if you can, but my understanding is that legally they have to give this 45-day notice, and that is 45 days is the time at which, the minimum time at which, they can submit a petition to the PUC, which is the Public Utility Board, which is a state organization out of Montpelier. And that petition that they make will stimulate the state to start looking at this, because the state has the ultimate authority to say, "Yes, you can do this," or "No, you can't." By Vermont law, apparently the towns, that power resides in the state, not in the town. I'm not going to debate that issue. But that's kind of the minimum legal requirements for this kind of thing. Ironically, my understanding, and I don't know if I'm correct in this, smaller projects have to give more notification than bigger projects in Vermont. This is, I'm new to Vermont, so this must be Vermont logic. But anyway, they did the absolute minimum to try to fly under the radar. So, I mean, I was in despair, quite frankly, when I first heard of this. Fortunately, I was able to link up with Jesse, who hadn't even heard about it until he saw it in the paper. And, you know, he's been fantastic in getting this group off the ground, because I don't know anybody in Vermont, and he knows everybody. So we have a very good core group that's formed, and, you know, we're taking it forward. So I'd love to have you join us.
So tomorrow, I can't make it, I'm on call, I work at the hospital, so that's not going to happen, but I'm certainly all opposed to this and would like to help any way that I can.
Sure.
Who owns the land there, and how is that happening?
The land is owned by a guy named Kenneth Kennedy. I don't know him very well, I haven't, only met him once, and I can't really say much about him, other than he obviously, to put it politely, has sold us down the river. My understanding is, he wants to move, and so obviously this will be extremely profitable for him to do, but he hasn't given too much thought about his neighbors.
And does the town have an official position on this, or is that...
Yeah, I can, let me try to answer some of this for you. First of all, the state has told us that town zoning cannot do anything as far as either restricting or anything like that, solar projects. It is in our town plan that we welcome the use of solar and renewable energy. I think, Martha, is that the best way to put it? The town plan does say that.
It does, in certain words, yes. It does, in certain words, yes.
And, but they, it's, you're absolutely right in that saying that this is really the decision of the Public Service Board. So this, again, the town does not have any say in it at all, except that we probably will be going, the Planning Commission and the Select Board are going to have a joint letter going to the Public Service Board stating that we're concerned about the roads. And depending on whether or not they have an excess road built in, if they don't, then we definitely have to have an understanding of what has to be done to the roads that they're gonna use to access this, okay? That's the only thing that we have at this moment.
Yeah, well, I'll just say, I think they're trying to get us into the weeds of talking about roads and, you know, where to place the substation, things like that, when the real issue is, this is an abomination. And there's nothing you can say about it other than it's horrible. And, and, you know, again, this is about an investment vehicle for commodities brokers. They're not altruistic about alternative energy. And this issue is coming up all over the country. It's not just Vermont. It's just that in other areas of the country, there are more, there's more local control. Like in Massachusetts, there's more local control. I was reading an article about towns in New York and Ohio, which are encountering similar things, where the towns have actually passed ordinances against, not against solar, but against, okay, we'll accept a certain size.
Right.
We're gonna limit this to, to whatever, 2 megawatts, not 20 megawatts.
Yeah.
And, and there are other towns that have taken even harsher stances of saying, we're not gonna allow any for five years. So I can forward that. These articles, a lot of these articles are posted on Jesse's website, Stop Solar, Stop Shasbury Solar. So I, and in fact, all the particulars known today about the project are posted there as well. So if you wanna come up to speed quickly, just go there, and all the information is there for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Ken?
Just one little comment, if it means anything or not. I checked out the solar panels in my house. If you're an individual and you have solar panels and you make more power than you use, they don't pay you for it. You give it to them.
You can't sell it to the grid.
They won't buy it from the individual. But if you're one of them big deals like that.
Yeah.
That's not quite true.
That's what I was told.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I'm dominating this discussion, but it's not quite true. I have solar panels in my house, and certainly in summer months, I use, I generate a lot, I'm a power station. I generate a lot more than I use. In the winter, I generate a lot less than I use. And net metering means that you basically average that out over a year. And if you have generated more over that year than you use, then, you know, you get some payment for that. I'm not sure if it's 100%.
Is it a credit?
It's a credit, yes. They credit you that.
The other thing I would suggest is that you consider is that if you have battery backup, which also is a nice feature, because if the power goes out on the grid, then your lights stay on, that then that the power company will buy essentially power from your battery in crisis mode. So they will actually draw from your battery and then refill it for nothing, you know, basically. So if they draw more, so there are a lot of nuances.
I'm just quoting what they told me.
Yeah.
Only under extreme conditions will they do that.
But the credit is something that it can be beneficial to.
Well, it's interesting, if I watch my battery usage, there are kind of instantaneous spikes where the power company draws power to level out their system. And that's usually on days when I have no need for that power.
You can do that in your computer and root.
Yes, yes, you can. It's not quite real time, but it's fairly close. So, so anyway.
Thank you.
There are a lot of swirls to this.
Do you know what the investment value is that they're going to make on this?
Oh, God, it's immense. The way these things work, and I don't think anybody can quite, it's designed, so you can't quite figure it out. But it is huge. They, they will make, I'm estimating, just on the power alone, something on the order of $10 to $20 million a year, just on selling the power. But then they sell renewable credits, the way that works. And this is how Elon Musk got all this money to start Tesla, was he was selling credits, saying, I'm a green operation. So, you know, some other company comes along and says, I wanna become green too, so I'll buy your green credits, because you're a green company.
Right.
So I'll pay you to transfer these credits to me, even though I'm, you know, burning coal.
Right, right.
And so there are all kinds of shenanigans that go on, and I'm not the world's foremost expert on it. But I've spent a lot of time looking at this stuff now. So these guys are gonna get very, very rich on these kinds of things.
Quite a bit of deception, isn't it?
Yes.
Plus, they make their money back. Isn't it, over a five or seven-year period, your investment? So if I invest, say, $100,000, in five years, I will get that money back, plus the profit.
Plus all of your profits.
Oh, I don't, I...
I believe that's the way it works. I think that's the way it works.
One thing I do wanna make mention of here, one of the gentlemen, Mr. Wills, reported that a decommissioning bond would be posted. His company sees the project as a temporary use of the land.
Right.
Okay, solar panels last, all right, everything in life is temporary. But solar panels last maybe 25 to 30 years. So you telling me that they're gonna come in here in 30 years, rip all this stuff out, and, oh, it'll be just like it was before. Oh, we forgot about the trees that take 100 years to grow, and about the other things, and the animals, and nothing of that is coming back. So they are just gonna strip this land, and in 20 years, or 30 years, they're out of there. Whatever, you know, it's disgusting how these people operate, but that's what we have to deal with in this world.
You're getting hoodwinked, aren't you?
Yes.
Can you post your meeting on your website afterwards?
It is posted.
I mean, but afterwards, you know what I mean?
I don't think they're doing a hybrid version. I think it's an in-person meeting.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say.
I don't think you're gonna have a Zoom component. Are you?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Because it would be helpful, or maybe even just the meeting minutes, so that then you can distribute it to whoever, in whatever source.
So people like Josh.
Because so that people like Josh and...
Okay, I have a guy in mind to take me.
I feel like, yes, there are some people in your group, maybe, that have some tech skills.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you again. Any other comments?
Is there anything more destructive and more sacred to destroy than our views here? I mean, what else is there? I mean, it just seems, that's the reason why a lot of people are here. And for them to build this monstrosity, it just, it just doesn't make sense. And I think this is being done under the guise of environmentalism, and really it's just greed. And we're gonna suffer from it. We may get some temporary gain, but it doesn't strike me as a wise decision for everyone in this community.
I think the shiny carrot is $100,000 in tax revenue that we would get from that. But I hardly think that's worth it when it affects, you know, the whole town, or even the people directly that live up there.
So, Corinne?
So I just think, was it, it was this Saturday's paper, when they were talking about the Holy, they were talking about the Apple Valley project, where they kinda have put that on hold, and it's gone back to the Select Board. They've basically kinda shut this hole down in Bennington. The residents up there have been fighting it, as we know, for numerous years. And so it's finally been kinda shut down, period. I'm just not understanding, as so many citizens have spoke out and were against us, against solar power, tearing up our countryside, destroying, you know, our land, our trees, the wildlife, our views, and things like that. I think the citizens, and you as a Select Board, and anybody else who holds an office, you should listen to us. We're not happy with it. And I think that there needs to be some kind of, whether it's put up to a vote to the town or what, but something, there's a lot of, obviously, you have a room full of people here tonight. We're not happy with it.
I'm not happy with it either.
I know you're not.
Right.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? No more comments?
Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to say something.
Okay.
My name is Seth Stratton. I've lived on Holy Smoke Road on and off for my entire 42 years. I've probably logged more time on that exact property than anybody enjoyed it with my father and my children. And to see, to see this coming up is disheartening, to say the least. And if there's ever a time for Shasbury to unite, this is it. That's all I have to say, I guess. I'm enjoying all the support and, and optimistic that hopefully we can put a stop to this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Seth.
Is that it for public comments?
Oh, we got Ken again.
Ken again.
Hold on a moment.
Would it be possible to have the Select Board put this on the March ballot for an up or down vote?
I don't know.
I didn't hear the...
He's asking if we could put this on the ballot for an up or down vote at Town Meeting Day in March, is what Ken was asking if we could do on this specific subject.
I guess we'd have to check with the LTC.
I think we'd have to check with the town lawyer.
Marlene?
Right.
Yeah.
Marlene?
I think you might need a petition to do that.
Okay.
It could be 154 signatures. And I don't think it could be a binding vote. I think it would just be...
A symbolic, a symbolic vote, yeah.
Check with the LTC.
The decision's not up to the town.
Right, exactly. It's not up to the town, so it could just be...
So it might be something, for those that maybe didn't hear, that, that a petition would have to be raised with 154 signatures, is what our town clerk is saying.
We don't have much time.
And, and there is not much time, because I think the ballots get printed at the end of this month.
Right.
To, to put it on the ballot for, for the March Town Hall election. But it would be a symbolic vote because, against it, if that was the case, because, like we said, it's the public utility company that has the final say on what goes forward. But it may be one piece of the puzzle that helps you fight the process.
How would that get done? How would that move forward if somebody needed to get a petition going?
Marlene Hall is our, yep, town clerk, so. And like we said, short timeframe, because the ballots are getting printed at the very end of the month.
And I can, I can try to contact the LTC to see if I'm correct.
Okay.
If you know anything, I can call tomorrow and see what they have to say.
Thank you for doing that, Marlene. We appreciate that.
Okay, anybody else? If we're all through with public comments, I'd like to go to the Treasurers Report.
Hi, Melanie.
Everybody? Yeah, did you get my reports here?
Yes.
Yep.
Put the cash flow first, please. This is one of these mid-month reports that are not terribly useful, because I can't project it to the budget since it's, since we only have two weeks' worth of information. But you can see, I told you last time, I was going to do that transfer to reserves, just to make a clearer picture of our cash position. And then I also said last time that our cash is a little lower than I expected to see it. If you wouldn't, I'm going down to the bottom half, Jen. Thank you. Do you see that cash balance? I talked about that last time, but I did look into it. That's because of the due to and due from, the general fund. There's, there's quite a bit of money that's sitting there in reserves that's going to get transferred over. So, so that 378,000 is misleading. There's actually another 300. And I will, when I get my act together, I will do that transfer, probably later this week. And if you could look at the reserves now, please. That's, I also showed this to you last time. Those are the, that's the other side of that transfer to reserves. You see it in that, the credits column.
Oh, folks, I'm sorry. We're just continuing our meeting. I'm sorry for the...
I don't know how much of that you heard. The credits are there in that credit, that 's called the transfer to reserves. We discussed that last time. The only other thing going on is water payments are still coming in. And this is the time that I always remind you that they are, that if you're having any trouble paying your utilities bills, the program is ongoing. It's not, I think it's not paying 100% anymore, but there's still money that the state is making available to help you pay your utilities bills if you need any help. That's everything on that. Mentioned reserves. Yeah, I think that's it. Anybody have any questions for me? Okay.
Thank you so much, Melanie.
Melanie, should I give you these, Melanie?
Oh, Melanie. Melanie, excuse me. Do you wanna take those?
I usually give these to Dave.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, one other thing I was gonna say. You signed a lot of payroll orders just now. The backlog is because of some extra complications with pay data, but we are caught up now, and it's simplified. And we're gonna have just a normal schedule for approving payrolls ongoing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. I guess the next on the agenda is the, gotta have a discussion or the possibilities for different places for town, for the town meeting. Marlene, you have been part of this talk?
Yes.
Do you wanna come up, Marlene?
Come on.
I know you don't, but you get to have the hot seat anyways.
So, are you gonna start, or are?
Okay, I'm sorry, yes. We, we're back to having a public meeting this year. The state has said that there is to be in-person. So two possibilities are usual Monday evening, a possibility is a potluck supper before, like we had, I think, two years ago, three years ago, just before COVID hit in full force. The negative thing about that is that school meeting, the union school meeting, is held in a different place each year. It is not gonna be in Shasbury, so we can't have the school board meeting first, and then the town meeting next. I don't know how many people go to that. The other possibility is to have it on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock at the garage. First of all, the first one would be at the school, where there's, would be, where chairs and all that sort of stuff are already there. And the potluck supper could be served there, because there is a kitchen for washing things up and that sort of stuff. So that's that. The other, of course, the second possibility is Saturday at 10 o'clock at the, at the garage. And then the next day would be the meeting, or the actual physical voting at the garage also. So there are pros and cons to each of them. The garage, the acoustics at the garage are terrible.
Yeah, they're not good.
And all the chairs and all that sort of stuff would have to be brought to the garage, or else... or else, I can't imagine making everybody stand for that meeting. So, all that would have to be brought up and then taken away, so on and so forth. So, I guess we need to kind of come up with a, with a consensus from the board, one way or the other.
So may I jump in and make a comment? So, I had a very long conversation with Karen Maller, who has run up our potlucks for many years, not only the one that happened pre-pandemic. And she was very against doing it at the town garage. Partly, we, and I didn't talk to her about the timeframe, except that it would be on Saturday and not, at 10:00 a.m. is kind of a weird time for a potluck, unless you're doing a brunch, but...
We were thinking coffee and donuts.
Yeah. But she is very willing, and, and I said I would help as well with the potluck. We think it's a nice thing. It's a nice neighborly thing to do. And that, you know, in the past, at least from her perspective, the school-union meeting has been fairly poorly attended, as opposed to the town meeting, where a lot of people do come out. And if certain of these things come onboard, like this solar event, I think that having a space that is comfortable with all the seats, that can have that potluck, I think it's gonna facilitate that discussion much better. So my, my vote would be on Monday evening with a potluck prior. And Karen said that that would be her preference, too, and she would help make all of that magic happen with me.
Would it be possible...
Anybody else have a comment?
I'm just, I have a question. Would it be possible to do the school at a different time, a different day?
So I don't know when the school, or where it is being held this year. I haven't looked into where the thing...
And the only reason I ask is because the day before town meeting is so hectic. We're, we're trying, we try to close at noon, but people are still knocking at the door to come in and vote, because they can't vote the next day. And we have to get set up at the garage, we have to get everything ready, then we have to get over to town meeting, and then at 10, or 10 o'clock at night, we're still picking up to get everything backed. And then at 6:00 in the morning, we have to be at the town garage for the whole day, for a 15-hour day. So that's why I'm just wondering if it would be possible to change it, at least to a different day. And I know we don't have a lot of time, because, you know...
So you would recommend doing, then, because of that close timeframe, to do it on Saturday?
Do it on Saturday.
And doing it Saturday morning versus Monday night?
Or Saturday evening, if you do it at the school. I mean, I, I don't know. I...
Okay. Have we ever, I don't know if we've ever done a, a weekend evening meeting.
And you could even start a little bit early.
Right.
And either break for the potluck, or do the potluck first, and then do the meeting. I don't know.
Right. Because Karen...
Sometimes it's hard for people, older people, to be there that late also.
Right, right. In the nighttime driving. And so, yes, I was trying to think about equitability of, of everybody and all of the folks.
And if you do it on Saturday, it might be easier to do it earlier in the day.
Yeah.
That's just a thought.
That's a fair point. Yeah, all fair points.
Saturday's kind of a sticky day, though, because people work all week, and they usually have plans for the weekend.
I think about that, and...
I don't think you're gonna have the turnout.
Right. Even with the potluck allure, yes.
Although the solar is gonna bring in a group of people.
I think that there'll be people, and...
Yeah.
But I also think just the tradition of having it on Monday night, like, people just kind of expect that, as opposed to like, something, you know. And, and maybe it is a time to change. I mean, we've had it for two years in, on Zoom, and, you know, had fairly good turnout for the Zoom meeting. And then...
I'm wondering, even, if we just start it a little bit earlier, because there won't be...
Yeah, on a Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm...
Or on a Monday.
Because there won't be a school board meeting.
And if we don't have the school board meeting, I feel like that would really tighten up our, our timeframe.
So if it differed at 5?
Yeah, so Karen had said, usually, the potluck started at 5. 6 o'clock was the school board, and then whenever that ended, then it was on to the select boards and town meeting. But with that, yeah, if we started at 5, people can kind of mull in for the potluck. And then if we started at 6:30, which is, you know, people are already expecting, because we always have our board meetings at that time.
On Monday.
And that gives people a, a little bit of a moment to get out of work, or just come directly from work. We'll have food for them.
Do you know if anybody's contacted the school to make sure they're even willing to?
I don't know. I, because my task was to kind of chat with Karen about things. But I don't know if David has already made overtures out, which...
I don't know.
He hasn't. He didn't.
I can certainly, why don't I do that? I'll talk with Jeff Johnson and, and see.
I do have to get this down for the town report also.
Right.
And, right. So, so we are talking about March, Monday, March 6.
6.
Or potentially March 4th, the Saturday, depending. And I'll just ask him both, just for the magic of having things. Okay.
Yes.
Did I get the impression that it's hard for you, because your, people are coming in all day on Monday to vote, and that it's hard for you to have, be ready at the school?
It gets very, it gets very tight.
If we make it till 6:30?
Well, it, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter. What happens on a Monday is, we close at noon, and then we pull the envelopes for the absentee ballots, and we have to go through each and every one of them, to make sure we've got them all in the computer, and they're marked off. And that takes a few hours. And, and when we're interrupted with people, and they, if people don't know, we close it, no, they'll, they'll knock on the door, that's fine, we let them in, and they vote. But it can make it a little bit tight to get over there for a Monday night meeting. But that's okay. We'll do it.
That's what I was saying. Rather than 5 o'clock, could we make it 6 o'clock, and have, have the meeting at 7?
We could, and then...
But then it pushes...
I'm still such a complainer, because then it's that much later that we get out.
Yeah.
And we have to be at...
At 5:00 a.m. the next...
At 6:00 a.m., I have to be at the garage the next morning to get ready to open the polls at 7.
So, that ballot process that you were just talking about, is that something that BCA members could help you with doing, so that you can be focused on other things? So maybe that's an option that, because there's quite a few of us on the Board of Civil Authority that probably would be able to help.
I'd invite you two to come in Monday.
I will, I will work on trying to figure that one out. But I think that maybe...
That would be wonderful.
And then you guys are not running like chickens around the, the block, because I know very much how much work you do to make all of this happen, and we appreciate all three of you. And they're all in the back, for those of you who can't see them.
So it would be better if we had...
If we did it at 5:00 p.m.
5, 5 to 6, and then have the meeting.
And then the meeting at 6.
Then we can get out just a little bit earlier.
And we'll get out, because it could get contentious.
That's what I'm thinking.
And so, and we have to listen to the end.
And we want everybody to have time to have their say.
Right.
Because it's, it's town meeting, and everybody needs to have their say.
It's an important thing.
It is.
It's our civic duty, and a delight of being in New England.
That's right. So if that works for you guys, if you guys are agreeable to that?
Sure.
I feel like that's a, a great plan. And then maybe we can also see if we can round up some BCA members to help on that Monday afternoon, to help you flow better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so just to recap, somebody repeat that, so I can hear it.
So, sorry, Art. So, we are thinking that Monday, March 6, is going to be the day for town meeting. We'll start at 5:00 p.m. with the potluck, and then proceed to the meeting at 6. The town hall, folks, are gonna close town hall at noon time. And then there will be some BCA members that will be helping with that ballot process, so that they are able to work a little bit better, and get out, you know, and not have crazy amounts of work to do in between. And I will reach out to Jeff Johnson and ask if that day is possible for Shasbury Elementary School. And...
And if the janitor can set up the chairs?
And he's lovely. I know him well from doing the Polar Express, and he's, he's very easy to work with. So I, I will, I will reach out for that. And I'll reach back out to Karen as well, to let her know kind of what we discussed here tonight.
Okay, very good then. Okay, is that agreeable with everybody?
Yes.
Sounds like, sounds like we have a plan.
Yep.
Okay. Hey, Marlene?
Yes.
You wanna go back to the hot seat again, please?
Yes, sir.
Can, can you fill, can you fill us in on what's happening downstairs, as far as the possibility of maybe some mold or something like that, please?
Yeah, I, I have asthma, and there's something that's been really setting me up to the point that it's very difficult to breathe down there for me. And I cough constantly. I can't catch my breath. It's when I'm in my office. There is some mold along the floor, along the wall, by the floor. And we've had a couple of times where there's been water issues. This issue is right underneath the window. It used to leak constantly before it was replaced. So I'm, I, I'm afraid there might be mold behind that wall, that may be setting me up. I'm also allergic to mold, so it's gonna be double whammy for me. But there's also a possibility that, we got a new copier in August. And since we closed up the office, it's been really bad. I get headaches and bad cough, and Gina gets headaches every day. I mean, it's, it's nonstop. So I have moved the copier to the other office, but I haven't been in there since. That was last week. And today, we weren't in there, obviously. We'll know tomorrow. Dave and I talked. He said he was going to get Surf Pro to come in. They're going to wash, they're gonna deep clean the carpets, because whatever it is, could be in the carpets also. Wash the walls, wash the floors, and cut out part of the wall to see what's behind there.
Okay.
And I will keep you posted, you know. I have been working upstairs, doing hybrids.
I was gonna say.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's been pretty awful.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, it's really, it's not fun.
My office smells.
Yeah, Gina's office has, both of them have.
Like mold and mold.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think Dave has a contract with Service Pro to do what Marlene said. Also, I think it's important that we do this, excuse me, because if there is a problem, we need to know this before we form a co-hall committee.
Right.
Right.
Build something down there. When there might be a major problem, we gotta solve first.
Right, right.
I, I think it's worth the money to, to do this right up front, and find out what it is. He also spoke about maybe even moving, moving in the trailer, temporary trailer again, that Marlene or some, or other people could work on of, okay? And I just wanted to bring everybody up to date, to make sure that we all are, have an understanding of what it is, and we all agree that it's gotta be done.
Yes, thank you. And if we did get a trailer, it would be right out front, easy for people to access. There would be stairs, but I could always come out. I did that all through COVID. So I would be happy to come out to help people if need be. So it would only be like three stairs.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Okay, the, we haven't officially adopted the fiscal year '24 budget, but before Dave went on vacation, he sent around another draft. It still looks like it's about a 5% increase. Some of the things that did increase, the, all the wages were increased by about 5%. Of course, the health insurance is a big hit. We took the Arlington Rescue Squad off from community appropriations and put it onto the, a line budget, a line in our budget, because we felt it was equal to Bennington's Rescue Squad service to us. It's a service that we have to provide to the people. And so it is in the budget this year. There is, and with all the increases, Sheriff's Patrol, we increased that quite significantly. If they're willing to give us that amount of time, we're actually asking, asking for about 32 hours a week, which is almost a full-time job. I don't know, Dave and I were gonna talk to the new sheriff to find out if they're willing to give us that much service and all that sort of stuff. So you're probably wondering where, where we had to cut, because there were several increases. But the biggest cut probably is to the Road 3, I'm sorry, Class 3 Road Reserve Fund. We have done such a good job with the roads and all that sort of stuff, that I think that if we just went with, where they, the state will pay us 80% for some projects, all we gotta do is kick in the other 20%. We have done some really major work, and I don't think that it's, there are that many really serious places that have to be looked at, because we have done so much. So, we cut the, the Class 3 Road Reserve by about $50,000. And we still ended up with roughly a 5% increase. Any comments or anything? We probably, on the agenda, we will further down, we're gonna throw down a special meeting on January 30th, where all this will be made official. Any other, any comments?
Nope.
I think, I think Dave has done a good job. I think the last time I saw Bennington, they were talking at least an 8% increase.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything about the Department of Public Works DPW report? Mike's not there?
No.
No.
They're doing a great job on the roads.
Oh, they did it again.
I am not sinking in, and we had a little bit of a mud season this week. So I'm very grateful for that whole crew, and making it drivable.
They've done an excellent job.
Yeah.
Okay, so next on the agenda would be the, we'd like to have a special meeting, selectmen's meeting, on January 30th.
Okay.
Where that is getting pretty close to the drop-dead date, drop-dead date, when the ballots have to be printed. So we need to have, we will finalize, by then we'll know about the school, the potluck supper. We will finalize the budget, see if there's been no other things, and anything else that has to be on the budget, on the ballot at that time. So, why don't we make this official? Would somebody make a motion that we have a special meeting on January 30th?
So moved.
Second.
What time, what, what time would be appropriate, Martha?
Yeah.
I don't, is this a meeting that we could do all in Zoom? It sounds like it probably is, as opposed to being in person, or are there gonna be warrants or something that we would need?
To my knowledge, there are no warrants, but I, I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
But, but, yes, yes, there could be, because there is...
That's the end, that's a...
This is, this is a month with five...
With five. I was thinking that, so...
Yeah, so, so he's always conscious about paying bills, so it very well could be...
An in-person one. I mean, we usually are six instead, so that we're out, because it should be a shorter meeting.
Six.
Um, I'm...
6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Six.
I'm also wondering if at that point, too, we can just go over the folks that we have for the Economic Development Committee, so that we can get that out the door on, in February, to start working on all of those things. So, just as one more agenda item, because we have resumes, we have everything to kind of, and I will be talking to Dave on the 23rd of January. So I'll have all that information for us that night, for that meeting. Okay.
So that's, so that's part of your motion? It'll be at 6 o'clock?
Sure. 6:00 p.m., January 30th, special meeting.
Uh, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5:00. So carry, 5-0-0. Any other business to come before us?
May I say something? Is this an okay time to bring something up?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Andrea Baki. I just wanted to say that we lost a very special person, a Shasbury resident, Nikki Burnham. Not sure if you know the Burnham family. Nikki and I went to high school together, and she's my age, around 40, and she passed from cancer yesterday. And I just wanted to ask if we could all just kind of keep the Burnham family in our thoughts. And, yeah, that's all I really wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Any other business? Okay, review of action items. Martha is going to talk with the school.
Yep, I'll reach out, yep, to Jeff, and I will talk with Karen Mellinger as well.
Yep, very good. Any other action items? I guess Marlene was going to check with the LTC to see if...
Right.
Something could be put on the ballot for the solar project. Anything else? Was there, I don't see anything else? Okay.
Yes. 54.
154.
Entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel issues.
So moved.
Second?
A second, motion is made, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So carry.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.